Thank you, Reverend.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Mr. President, I've asked Mr. Sayah to address the council just briefly this morning. Have some news to share.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to share with you some good news due to a lot of good work from a lot of good people, including our grant writers. We submitted our IDA funding request just a few weeks ago for fiscal year '23-'24, and the maximum amount of money that we're able to request is $350,000. Part of our funding request has to do with our new juvenile program, Catalyst program. That program only started handful of months ago, less than a handful of months ago, and it's at capacity. We have a waiting list already for juveniles. So part of our funding request was to continue to help out with Catalyst program in addition to our adult program. IDA not only awarded us our full $350,000 amount that we requested, but they've also earmarked an additional almost $150,000 specifically for building capacity for Catalyst program. So our total award amount for '23-'24 from IDA is $493,750. We've been asked to go down and give a 15-minute presentation to Dr. Gupta, who's the director of the Office of National Brooklyn Pro Policy. Tom Carr and Laura invited us to do that. We're going to have on March 28th. They love to see these sorts of efforts be made to address specifically the juvenile population. And that's what we've started doing, and apparently we're doing it fairly well.
You're better than "fairly well."
Well, thank you. But I just want to throw out this reminder, some of this funding is for new staff. We don't have room for new staff. The same. So I wanted to share that with you. It's very good news.
Do I need to go look for new mobile units?
Well, I was thinking along the lines of something a little different.
Yeah, takes a little while.
Whatever y'all decide.
Takes a little while to get there. You know, I was in Charleston, Eddie and I went to Charleston on Sunday, and we were down there Monday, and I actually volunteered you to, what is the director of whom, what's his name?
Secretary Sandy.
Secretary Sandy, to help the rest of the state develop programs similar to what we have.
On loan. We're not giving you away. You're coming back.
They acknowledge that we have an exceptional program here in Brooklyn County, and the rest of the state is not as fortunate.
We emphasize that we have a lot of good people in place in the programs that have been started, how successful they've been. And we had an opportunity to brag on you all and honestly the rest of the council for the work that's being done. So it was very productive. We had an opportunity to hear some things that they're doing within the system themselves, which I think is successful on their side of reductions and predictions, a very successful meeting.
They spoke a little bit about the GOLs program. And if you have an opportunity, I would appreciate if you could look into that a little bit, if you haven't already, and get a chance to get back to me and tell me your thought about the GOLs program.
The program in the jail.
Yeah, that's the one where if they fail out of your programs and not a fit for your programs and go in there, they can introduce them into the GOLs program. And there's a thought process that some of the delegates are pushing to have that happen as a trial in our ERJ. But I'd like to know your thought process on what you think, how it could work with yours. I mean, if we can take, there's almost 30% to 40% success rate with that program. If we can take the ones that don't fit in your program and get 30% or 40% of them help. And, you know, we're starting to really narrow down to where we're helping everybody, you know?
Okay. I'll look into it.
Good work, Tim.
Thank you.
Yeah. If possible, I would like to be in the backseat of that trip on the 28th. I'll try to keep my mouth shut, but it's just something that I'd love to be part of. Yeah. But I think it's-
Is it going to be tunnel vibes or recorded or anything?
Find out.
I think it's important to note that, number one, we're only five and a half years in to this- into this program, and the recognition that they've gotten in such a short, our program is such a short term with IDA, and this is the highest level of funding that we've ever gotten from IDA, and it's actually higher than what our budget revenue projection-
Sounds like it's $250 from being their maximum funding, isn't it? I thought their maximum was $500,000.
Oh, that changed a couple of years ago.
Oh, did it?
350. So, what they, they awarded us of and beyond.
For two programs, and we've really taken care of them.
Yeah, this is the largest award we've ever gotten from IDA.
Which is the, what is the largest award that they've ever given this one?
I think it's 350,000. As far as I know, this is the largest they've given to us.
Well, we made a promise to ourselves five and a half years ago, we're going to be the best in the region, and I think that we are by a long, long way, and it comes from-
Well, I think the mere fact that they have him going down the needle, Dr. Gupta, is illustrates that we're probably one of the best in the country.
Right.
How many years was Gupta head of our health in West Virginia before he went to Washington D.C. Police?
Well, he was head of, no, county, but he became head of state. Oh, not that long. Just when Justice was, Tom Kennedy.
Tim, this program right there that you're getting ready to work on in the high schools is tremendous. It's tremendous. It has effects. I'll just tell you a real quick story. Many, many years ago, a gentleman by the name of Cornell Johnson that was put into the schools, and he was a cool dude. I mean, he was a cool person that a child would-
He could relate.
Somebody in my age, you know, in high school could relate to, you know? And, you know, he would pull you in. I mean, he would pull you into the library and say, "How's it going, you know, who you, who you want or who your friends?" So, he made those connections, and I've never forgotten that. And I saw him a few years ago out in the yard city, and I went up to him and said, "Thank you, my buddy. What you did 30, 40 years ago makes a difference. It made a difference."
It made a difference to me.
That's true. Get a lot of work there. The program that was in the Recovery Resource Center of being able to bring young adults from school in just to talk as a, as a go-to place, "How's it going?", that's different than what we're talking about here.
They're busier than they know what they do. Yeah, that's a separate program.
Right. So, the people are, that's starting to get traction too.
Oh, it's got traction though.
It's Thursday night.
They're in high demand.
Yeah.
We've, we were able to add two more staff members to that program because of the 2020 and how things were all messed up. We had a lot of money left over that we were able to dedicate to two additional staffs. They've got some extra help now.
So, real quick, because one of the things I think awaited to, most of the children, maybe we can give direction right now, or we can put on an agenda item next week, but most of the children, and they're in those situations, it's kind of like the Boys and Girls Club, they get fed because that's the only place they get food. Is there any way that we could just make sure some, we give them allocation to feed those kids when they come in that night on Thursday nights?
We've been, we've been using, we have a fundraiser account now that was started back with that original law, if you remember that. We used some of that money for our event, but we've had other donations that have come in, so we actually give them, we give them pizza here and there. I can't say we do it every week.
But, Tim, I'm trying to get you more money, be quiet for a second.
All right.
Let, let us look at it.
Yeah, we need to do that, or that's what makes a difference.
You know, we're very, very cautious about using public funding for something like that, and Tim does have that special revenue account, but we'll look at it.
Here's, here's, I'm going to give you one thing to think about. Five and a half years ago, just, just, just one, five and a half years ago, how did we get people to show up here?
I know exactly how we did.
You, Lisa Fett?
Yeah.
Right. So, how do we get kids, young adults to show up to this program we feed?
Thank you.
I think, Tim.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
They don't have home ec and school anymore, do they?
I think they do.
Do they?
They changed it to diversified education.
And include boys then.
Include boys in the house at school.
Yeah, I was at home ec.
We were, we were way after you.
Yeah, after you, after you, after you.
We didn't have computers. We didn't have, we had blackboards.
After you left, they figured I'd better change this process.
Jim, didn't we have blackboards? Control.
I had, we had blackboards, control.
Yeah, but you had computers and books.
No, we didn't have computers when we was in school.
I can remember when Dad brought home the first calculator, and I thought, "Man, it's going to make my math easy." "No," he said, "no, that ain't for you."
Can you operate a slide rule?
Well, sort of. I can do an E6B.
My dad could take that slide rule and do anything.
All right, we need most of the, to approve the agenda, please.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, March the 3rd, if there's no modifications or changes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Purchase order, any questions on the purchase order? And I think I had one, but I'm not so sure. Mine's good. Any, any questions from anybody else? Yes, internal budget revision, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. I have two internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration, both submitted by the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon. The first is for Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 341 Supplies and Materials by $3,500.
Maintenance repairs to vehicles?
Well, no, Supplies and Materials. He has an unencumbered fund balance. He's asking to reduce Supplies and Materials by $3,500.
Okay.
Current unencumbered fund balance is $9,142.26, with 67.9% spent to date. An increase line 217 Maintenance Repair Autos. That account currently has a deficit balance of $3,223.54.
What maintenance repair vehicle?
Gary, I asked Gary, and Gary said he didn't know. He can only get generators or, Gary said he didn't know, but he does have a deficit balance in that account.
All right, well.
Can we pull up a line item on the account that says what was?
We can look at it, but it's already been paid.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering to answer the question, what maintenance? We should be able to look at it and see what, what that, that part is.
His second request is Department 708 Deputy Reserves requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 341 Supplies and Materials by $105. Current unencumbered fund balance is $2,260.34. An increase line 345 Uniforms by $105. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $230.
All right, now, okay.
So, we used to, we used to get a copy of the page where he was transferring that. I remember for a good while we used to have that, and we're not doing that anymore. Is there a reason why we don't put that in?
And now, when we went to the new system, we just didn't. I mean, we can start doing that if we might attach them to them.
I actually like to be able to see the, the amount of unencumbered fund balance in that, or we will start providing that in the future.
I guess I'm, I'm the same as Mr. Delia. I'd like to see what's being spent on that account.
All right.
All right, changes status, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Monica Snyder, as a part-time clerk with an hourly rate of $15, effective March 3rd, 2022. New hire recommendation received from Brian Ross, Director of Community Development for David Cumley Jr., as a Building Inspector One with an annual salary of $42,000, effective March 21st, 2022. Change of status received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management for the following. They are going from a firefighter two to a firefighter three. Thomas Gorman, salary increase from $46,032 to $48,459, effective February 16th, 2022. Jeremy Taylor, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 16th, 2022. Nicholas Pennell, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 16th, 2022. Tim Sabal, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 16th, 2022. Joseph Fato, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 16th, 2022. Aaron Falls, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 16th, 2022. Jared Wall, salary increase from $53,501 to $55,897, effective February 22nd, 2022.
Is firefighter three the top or going for? What's the difference between two?
Well, you go from a one to a two after one year, and you go from a two to a three after two years. So, a total of three years is a full time career fighter, and the six, all the, the last six are all 56-hour-a-week firefighters, and they're all the safer grant firefighters. So, your safer grant runs out in part.
So, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, for, it's only for time in service?
Time in service, and it has to be, there can't be any type of disciplinary action can be, if the recommendation actually comes from granted.
Any other questions? We have approval minutes. We need to pull out, it's February 10th, 2022, council meeting, and Councilperson Delia was not present. Weekend, February 10th, 2022, Board of Review and Equalization.
Mr. President, I'll read the minutes from February 10th. Review and Equalization, February 10th.
We have a motion to forward, and we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. County Council calendars, we have, we'll be here in the chambers next Thursday at 9:30 a.m. Boards and Commissions, there'll be nothing tonight. Monday, the 7th, we have a 12 p.m. Region Act, 4 p.m. Historical Landmarks, 6 p.m. Planning Commission. Wednesday, the night, 9:30 a.m. Development Authority, 6 p.m. Roundhouse. Thursday, the 10th, 6:30 p.m. Fire Board. Any changes or corrections on Boards and Commissions?
Region Act, there'll be the Capitol State Park, and as of now, Senator Capito will be in.
All right, we have a bond reduction for South Brook, Section 1, grading BCP file number 2112-439, tied to BCP number 2105-176, and 2105-10301. Bond numbers 0798292. Engineering Department has made this recommendation. Any questions or concerns on that one? We also have a fee waiver, Minor Platte Clint Rock RLA, Spring Mills Community Park, that's a $501.50. They're asked for a waiver because that's projected to be the community park.
And, and you have provided that way, similar waivers in the past for the development of that park?
Yes, sir.
I would certainly encourage that.
Can I go back a second? On the, on the bond reduction, where it says remaining items to be completed, it lists stormwater management facilities, final stabilization, is, is the, is the, the thing that I've been asking about for the last six, seven years about the deeding of the property, is that not a requirement of, of that?
Yes, sir, that's a requirement, but the grading, that's actually carried under the final plat permit. This was just a grading bond that they pulled, and in this case, it is tied to that. Before this full release, whatever come for the bond, that would also be a condition of it, but this will be the very last bond that's ever released for them, and that'll probably be satisfied much earlier than this grading bond is matured.
Right.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking that is not because I didn't think it was part of it, was because it doesn't say it on there.
Right, it, it is a piece of it, but I looked at it as more just the grading permit, and really what this is concerning is they're stabilized, their stormwater is done, and they've had it inspected, and it's ready to be released. That's it. We'll still always hold that money in the final plat bond that's laying there as well for the property owner and the HMA transfers.
All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for February, I'm sorry, March 3rd, 2022.
We have a motion to forward, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion?
We approved a minor plat exemption.
Yes. All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. President, if we may, we do have a 10 o'clock minute open.
All right, let's get to the yoga.
This will be fast. As the council's aware, the county received a three-year grant through the Department of Justice to provide communications, training, stress reduction, stress reduction techniques to the tune of about $300,000 a year for the next three years, targeted to your public safety employees, central dispatch, emergency communications employees, Sheriff's Department, and firefighters. As part of that grant, it had a yoga log that we did reach out to Department of Justice that needed to be included, and we did not have the option to substitute the requirement for some yoga classes. So, we advertised some time ago for proposals for yoga classes and received no proposals. We re-advertised, we do have certification publication in file indicating that it appeared in the March Word Journal on the 17th. The deadline for proposals was yesterday at 4:00, and we did receive one bid proposal for yoga classes prior to the deadline. And this is 100% funded. There's no upfront money, no matching funds.
It was about 10%, if I remember correctly, that was allocated for the, of that grant for the yoga funds.
This is a lump sum. Whitney Ingram, Moving Mountains Yoga. We, Whitney, Whitney Ingram. Moving Mountains Yoga. The weekly rate is $300 for six sessions, and the annual would be $15,600.
Total number of participants shall not exceed 133, so that should take care of the 66. So that should take care of the sixty-six law enforcement, the twenty-two firefighters as well as your emergency communication.
Is there a designated location for this?
It just, it's six thirty-minute weekly classes. That'll work with us as well as scheduling attention. Thank you.
All right, that's the only bid that we have?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on, board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had the three meetings, which I was able to make two. Monday, I had the border health meeting. They said they have a couple of applicants for nurses, one which they're going to try to do as an head nurse, but they haven't interviewed yet or anything like that, so that's a positive thing. The epidemiologist said that the new cases is down ninety percent. So that's, that's pretty good. And then after.
How they, what they relate to that?
All the restrictions going on?
Yeah. Or, or them getting on, on the bandwagon, right?
Midterms.
Yeah, exactly, exactly right.
And then yesterday, I had a Telamon board meeting. They pull in over four point five million dollars in grants.
Is that right?
Telamon.
Yep. I asked them, I said, what area of West Virginia is covered is the district paying in? Four point five billion dollars in grants.
Sure.
And it's, yeah, mostly for housing, veterans, low income, and that kind of stuff. Very impressive. And they said, yeah, they, they're well known for having a very diversified portfolio of grants. There's my.
We did talk when we were down in Charleston, we did have several conversations about locality pay, about trying to get that changed, and, and apparently there's.
Definitely need.
I think there's three or five different counties that are having the extreme differences like.
That's our border counties.
Yeah, our border.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, but we did express the, the need for the health department to, to be able to hire nurses is a big issue right now. Both schools.
It's funny because they've got sanitarians, can't get nurses. For fifty years, it was always, they had nurses, couldn't get sanitarians.
And it's football.
Probably got to do pay scales.
Oh, yeah.
If I'm saying.
Mr. Delia.
I, I had an airport meeting, but I, I missed it, but I'm sure Jim took care of that. I was in Charleston.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, I actually had a meeting in Parkersburg for West Virginia Corp. I guess the biggest part of that was the, the liability part of our policy will probably go up a little bit, but our mod rate for workers' comp is coming down. So I think it's going to be not quite a wash, but with the mod rate coming down, we're not going to see that much of an increase on the liability side. Talked a little bit about the new reporting of the workers' comp abilities. They're starting off with a couple pilot areas to see how that's going to work, and we are going to be one of them. I had an EPTA meeting, and I didn't, wasn't able to attend it in its beginning because I was stuck at the DMV trying to get my driver's license renewed, so I was late getting there.
How'd that work out?
Not too good. I'll get into that story later on, but anyway. And then I was able to make it to the airport authority meeting. It was both Zoom and in person. Jefferson County didn't reappoint their appointee this year, so we were going to be missing John Allen there.
Well, it wasn't a, it wasn't, it wasn't.
They're not going to do the funding yet. He still attended, he was still zoomed in, but he was as a, not as a participant, but as a, as a guest. He wanted to speak on a couple of things, so he was, he was honored that it built it. The budget next year, we're going to have to do a, a correction for the bottom line, but, but the bottom line is still strong with all of the adulties, the rents, the leasing. Finance committee met last Friday, and said, needs to be an amendment to the budget due to the growth. So with that, that's not a bad thing. So once the, the increase in that and some bottom lines, we're going to show, show good, good, strong budget out there. The, the Hunter Carlos Wilson Scholastic program, we're partnering up with Shepherd College to start an aviation program out there. Right now, they have two participants that attend at Bravo Aviation for that. There's concerns about our liability that as the county, if we implemented that, you know, on the airport authority level, how much liability will we have? From what the lawyers seem to think, that we're not the ones that are doing the teaching, we're not the ones that are doing the program, we're just kind of giving it as an endorsement to let the participants be able to have it there. So we're just showing strong partnership with them when it comes to that.
Although I didn't attend the meeting, I did have conversations prior, and was, did Kathy do a presentation out there about the restaurant?
No.
She?
No, no, we, there was a, Nick and I and Jim and, Jim, the attorney, our representation, we did a walk around on looking at the location for the proposed park, as well as in addition to a observation deck with outdoor seating on one part of the building with the other. And Nick was going to have conversations with Kathy at the airport to kind of let her know what we had in mind, that, you know, with the increase in size of the seating capacity, only certain times of the year when the weather's permitting, that we want to make sure she's, she's on board with it. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, it's my understanding that she's filling the restaurant.
Yep.
She's filling it?
Yeah, it's great, it is. It's, it is, it's great food, and I highly recommend the daytime operations because you get to see a lot more activity.
But it's neater at night, watching the land and all the lights and all that stuff.
It is.
It's cool. I could, that, I think, you know, I think that an observation deck out there would be a, I think it'd be a really big plus to add to that, just so that people and, you know, I can see schools doing field trips for classes and coming out there and sitting on the observation deck and watching, talking about planes and that kind of stuff.
Are you saying an observation deck? Or you're talking about outdoor dining?
Outdoor dining, observation. I mean, you'll be able to, there'll be tables like mid tops, high tops, you know.
Grand level or?
No, no, elevated above the.
At the restaurant level.
Yeah, at the restaurant level, they'll have to renovate the one window, and our design engineers.
Jim?
No. Who would use your county?
Oh, yeah.
Robot.
Alan.
John.
Crabtree.
Crabtree.
Crabtree rooibau.
Might, might have to get in touch with them to maybe see if we can't get them to come out and take a look to do a, do a rendering for us.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do cable, cable railing, something that doesn't obstruct the view.
Yeah, so if they would, we could get them in touch with Nick out there, somebody, that'd be great. Jet A sales, the fuel sales, they're down a little bit because there was a nominally last year when we had a couple rather large transport planes come in, but still sales are strong. The lighting project is moving along nicely, you can really see a difference in the, in the LEDs versus the old incandescents.
Are they open trench out or they?
No, no, most of everything is already in conduits, so they'll do it from pull boxes and cans and set the new fixtures. Any of the impavement lighting, now that's going to have to, they're going to have to offset the approaches and, and they're doing an assault strip, which is a three thousand foot lighted end for the military out there. Now, believe it or not, those lights you cannot use LEDs in, because when they do N V T night vision goggles, they do not pick up the.
Is that right?
The lighting from those, so they'll have to go back to impavement and incandescents in those.
All right.
That was about it. And I, well, it's almost time for it, but I do have an applicant for the, for the boards.
Always, always, I mean, those guys that are, you know, always thinking outside the box and looking at ways to improve.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Mr. Gokan.
Yes, sir. Mr. Delia and I had the opportunity to go to the legislative session, went down Sunday and came back Tuesday, but we also had the privilege to receive a proclamation from the Senate and the House on our two hundred and fiftieth birthday. Very, very well done. You know, just privileged to be a part of that, to receive it on behalf of the citizens of Berkeley County and the council.
Pictures and stuff too?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Senator Trump and Rucker both spoke, did a little speech about it in the Senate, did a very nice job, very nice.
And we had an opportunity to sit with Secretary Sandy to discuss the jail bill and hear their sides of their problems as well. And, you know, they've done a great job in keeping their costs down, and they've done that to be able to, they've moved some employees from one side of their budget to the other that where the state actually picks up their budgeting as to corrections. And we talked about the programs, as when Tim was in earlier, of what county is doing to, to keep our, our bills down as much as we can, and also to improve the quality of people's lives, you know, keeping them in these programs, keeping the families whole. So, and we assured him that we were, we're a working partner, that we're a willing partner to work with them to make things better for all of us, and that we understood the problems in the past, you know, when the county actually had responsibility of the jail bill or of the jail itself, and how much better those conditions are today compared to back in the eighties in particular.
City had during jail too, I know that.
They did. They still have a cell, there's still a cell in the building.
I think you're intimate with it. I got, I got ran in by, by police officer Jenkins one night for hopping cars in the snow, you know, sled riding on your feet, and he said, did you learn anything? I said, yes, sir, yeah, that cruiser sure was warm.
And we also, what we had to learn was not to get caught.
Yeah, exactly. Don't be the first one to let go.
We had an opportunity to meet with Berkeley, with the governor's office, and discuss the cost of living, challenges that we have from all of our state employees, including the troopers, to healthcare, D L A teachers, you know, the whole, the whole, the whole, you know, their understanding.
Right.
Of, of our problems there, but also I would, I would like to be able to say that we were handled very well, and I think that Omega did a tremendous job for us while we were down there, they got us in front of the people that we needed to talk to, and it's very professionally handled, well done.
Yeah, all great work. Seems like every time we get emailed that we need to contact the senators or, and delegates being already taken care of, so, and that, that's the thing, and over the years, we haven't been able to do that, you know, just, first of all, it's a really bad time, while we're setting our budget to try to get, spend time down at the Capitol, we continually say we need to do it, and we want to do it, but even if we did, you show up without someone taking you to where you need to go, and that's already had the conversation, it's a big difference.
And made the appointments.
Yeah.
They're very busy, especially the secretary level.
It's crazy.
But it, it's really important to do that, and we've seen that once again, you know, the importance with the legislators for the support and, and keeping, you know, keeping them on what big issues or concerns of the, of the council do.
All right. I don't have anything to report on, other than I did receive a letter from Bill Stubblefield, and I just want some direction on it. I'm sure it wouldn't be okay with it, you know, that the community service has been doing roadside litter pickup for two years now?
Actually, one, three.
Three years? And been doing a wonderful job, and it seems like that the Stubblefields are ready to start doing their, trying to change the perception in the county of, together we make a difference in, you know, trying to keep a road picked up. This one basically say in the same road picked up twice, uh, let me see, I think it's twice a week. And trying to change that mindset of people hopefully would think twice before they throw trash out, and that, that was one of the reasons why the Stubblefield donated a lot of money. And so they're asking, you know, to be part of the team, which I'm sure we're okay with, and will be that the Boy Scouts, the Berkeley County Community, Berkeley Community Pride, the Eastern West Virginia Community Foundation, us, the county council, and the Solid Waste Authority in Apple Valley, and slash Astoria, would be willing, if they pick up the trash, if, if community service could go around and pick up the bag after they picked it up. And I don't see no reason at all that we shouldn't do that. Is everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
I'll get Mr. Stubblefield and Mrs. Stubblefield to let them know. I don't see Chuck Young in the audience, so.
He's on his way, ready to share.
Okay, all right, let's, let's skip on over to Mr. Davis's. He has a few things.
Can I, on a, is it time yet to ask Lynn for an interview?
Yes.
I'm going to bring Chip Leatherman in for an interview for the airport authority.
And that's.
I can get ahold of him, I've got his cell phone to see what Thursday will work for him, unless, might be better for you to do it, though, wouldn't it?
Okay. Let's get the world, I stuff, you have James Keith wanting to apply for Stormwater Board, and you have Charles Bryan Smith for the Building Code of Appeals. So I'd say send them all.
Don't make it the seventeenth, I mean, I won't be here on the seventeenth.
It'd be good to see him, I haven't seen him since he was fifteen years old.
I tell you what.
And he was, he was a pistol back then.
He was, and I mean to say, he's taken all that energy and putting it into.
The right places.
Yes, he has.
That's good. Anything else, any, any appointments or anything anybody wants to do? Okay, now I'm back on track. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. The first matter that I have for your consideration is state budget revision number nine to the general fund. This is pretty, of all the state budget revisions we've done this year, pretty unremarkable. One of our smaller state budget revisions. Since the last state budget revision that you approved, we've received twenty-four checks totaling a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Just a couple things to point out to you. As you know, we did replace the four rooftop units on senior services in February, and as the crane was taking one of the, the, the old units off so that the new unit could be put into place, it was actually put in onto a trailer, and we took it directly to scrap. So we received two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in scrap metal fees from Martinsburg Scrap, which is included. We received nine checks, totaling nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars for I T services, two checks for claims payments on our fleet, one for a two thousand eighteen Ford Police Interceptor, and the other one for a two thousand nineteen Dodge Durango Police Interceptor. And then finally, as the councils are aware, we do about seventeen hundred, not we, our day report center does about seventeen hundred drug tests a month, with many of those being now for the state of West Virginia, we have become the drug tester of choice for D H H R.
That's a lot of drug.
That's a lot of drug tests. That's why, if you remember when Tim did his budget presentation, we actually had to increase supplies, materials, as well as contracted services, not only for the drug test, but how the drug test interpreted. But anyway.
Which gets reimbursed?
It's all reimbursed.
By payment.
In, in this particular state budget revision, we've received five checks from the state of West Virginia for D H H R drug tests. In, in this particular state budget revision, we've received five checks from the state of West Virginia for DHHR drug tests totaling sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that's just one month's worth of, of drug testing.
Plus it provides a, a valuable service to the community to be able to monitor that and keep holding people accountable as well.
And we have a very professional staff, and we're now fully staffed with, um, male and female, uh, drug testing technicians. So we've got the facility, we have the personnel, so it makes sense for them to use us. So total amount of this state budget revision is a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Recommending that nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars be, um, infused in information technology, supplies, materials. Two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars go into central garage, again, for those two vehicles that are being repaired. And the balance of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars be placed in your contingency account.
All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on the state budget revision number nine, Fund Zero Zero One? Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Motion been made, seconded, uh, to accept the, uh, budget revision number nine, Fund Zero Zero One. Uh, any discussion? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. MOU on one sixty-seven, air left wing.
Yes, sir. If the council will recall, two weeks ago, um, we presented the mutual aid agreement that was being proposed by, um, the air guard. It did include the city of Martinsburg Berkeley Fire, as well as the five VFDs as signatories on the MOU. At that time, uh, Mr. Delagotti indicated that there was some language that he needed some, uh, needed to look into and get some clarification. And it's my understanding that after looking at that language, um, it, it affects the city of Martinsburg more than it does us. So you, Anthony, you're okay with, with the council approving that?
So there's a general liability waiver in there, which I was fine with, meaning, um, anything involved with activities under this mutual aid agreement, that you couldn't go after the other, our department. But then the feds put that specific language that only applied to the federal government about the use of firefighting phones. I think that all of that would already be covered by the general liability waiver. But I was just concerned that it was one-sided. It didn't say that the United States couldn't sue county or anybody else, their uses of the phones. But really, I mean, it's all stemming from the city's, uh, issues that it's had with its water plant. Which was outs, that use of those phones was outside of any agreement, so. This, I don't think this would apply to the testing out at the air guard. So I'm, I'm fine with going with it.
All right, entertained a motion to enter into MOU at the one sixty-seventh, air left wing.
So moved. Give the president to sign or who else?
Yeah.
Actually, it would be, uh, the chief of Berkeley Fire, as well as the president.
Yep. So choose to say that.
All right. Motion, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Might as well move on to the adoption of the budget. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Um, as the council is aware, uh, in September of, uh, twenty twenty-one, you established the timetable for, um, the implementation of your fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We've gone through the process. You started, um, budget hearings the second, Thursday, and, um, January. You went through the board of equalization and review. We've had a number of budget workshops. We had one workshop, uh, at which time you established revenue projections. And then based on those revenue projections, you had a workshop that we dealt with expenditures. When we did the revenue projection workshop, as you know, it was the final revenue numbers. Were dependent on the certified values from the assessor's office. And the assessor's office couldn't provide us with the certified values until you went, um, signed the eyes of the board of equalization and review. And then they also needed some numbers, excuse me, on public utilities from the, the state tax office. Long story short, we finally got the certified, um, property values earlier this week. And as we expected, um, we had a very, very, uh, strong year of, of growth. A, a lot of, um, new property put on the books. But we also had, um, uh, quite a few of the existing property values that, that increased. So, uh, as a result of that, um, the levy document requires that we roll back the levy from, uh, levy rate of fourteen oh six to a levy rate of thirteen eighty-one, which is a twenty-five cent reduction in the levy rate. Five years ago, uh, we had the same scenario, not quite to the extent that we, that we do this year, where we rolled the levy rate back from, um, fourteen ten to fourteen oh six. Now, it would appear, at least in, at first glance, that, um, a twenty-five cent, uh, reduction in the levy rate would have an adverse, you know, a severe adverse impact on the budget. But the bottom line is, it's about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's certainly well within, uh, budget. Um, I've already adjusted your expenditures. Uh, all I did was take the five hundred thousand dollars that was in your capital building, um, allocation, and reduce that by the amount of, of the reduction in, um, your projected, um, property taxes. I want to point out that my property tax projections were actually, um, about four hundred thousand dollars under. What we're, we're scheduled to collect in year was about four hundred thousand dollars over, so, uh, between the two, we were, we were pretty close.
So the capital for the buildings went from five hundred.
Uh, to... It's sixty, and it ended up being sixty and change. And that's okay, because then we'll, we'll infuse that. We, I'm, I'm...
So your budget projection would have been, was right on if it would have been fourteen oh six?
Yeah. So, um, long story short, um, I, you, you still had a really good budget. This is a sustainable budget. You've been able to fund all the requests in a reasonable, uh, manner. My recommendation to the council, um, is that, um, you adopt the, the levy rate at thirteen eighty-one.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve that so we could have a discussion.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I, I'd like to say that, you know, I think that, uh, I think that we're, you know, we were able to maintain, um, the county government and, uh, and handle the growth and continue to do what we're, uh, we've been doing all along. I think, uh, that this, um, this reduction is a, is a great thing to do for us to do to, um, put more money in the taxpayer's pocket and be able to give them something back. And still be able to maintain what we have to do.
All right, anybody have anything?
I agree, especially now that the cost of living has risen considerably, uh, over the last year or so. And we have an opportunity to, to provide a little bit of relief. I, I think that's important.
All right, um, yeah, um, I think the biggest thing is, is the, the values are going up, uh, which is because of the national, uh, inflation rate that we're, that's going on, especially here, here. And it's good also, uh, you know, in saving the taxpayers four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, it's always good to have that cushion of going down to thirteen point eight one, um, and, um, so.
Yeah, and, and this is the second time we've done this since I've been in office, which is, you know, and, and granted, one time we had to actually trim budgets.
Right.
Um, while, while we've been on.
Nine percent operating.
Turn, turn the operating by nine percent. So I think it's a, a great thing to do to try to keep, uh, and help keep, uh, you know, the government operating at, uh, at as lean as it can run.
And if you don't remember, a couple of years ago, it's been two or three years, we looked at, once the budgets had been adopted, um, what the levy rates were for, um, the other fifty-four counties. And about two-thirds of the other counties had actually maxed out their levy rate at fourteen thirty. And, and that's still the, that's still the ceiling. I, I would venture to guess that once everyone's budget, uh, budgets are set, and we pull that list up from the state auditor's office at Berkeley County, despite our growth, despite the demand on services, we'll probably have one of the lowest levy rates in the state. And this, this council should be recognizing, commended for, for that.
We, we had, when we were in Charleston, we had conversations about, you know, being able to continually move the jail bill back. And if I remember correctly, I, I think Sandy said that, that's kind of unheard of. So, you know, we see what we're doing with that. We see, you know, being able to, um, being able to roll the levy rate back. I think, a- and we're still, what are we, the twenty-second poorest, uh, in the state as, as far as, uh, money being returned from the state, so.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a great example of, of how well, uh, this council, as well as Alan Davis, uh, working these budgets and putting everything together, have been able to manage the taxpayers' money.
Yep. All right, uh, need him, um, all right, any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. He was here for a second.
Charlie, let's start.
All right, the next on our agenda, we have Chuck Young, CPA, managing partner of Cox Holiday Young, um, and Char, uh, for the, the county council financial statement. Charlotte.
Chuck will be in in just a moment.
You want to introduce yourself?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, please.
Um, I'm Charlie Heilmann, and I'm a manager at Cox Holiday Young. And I worked on your financial statements, and I've also, um, been working with Sheri.
Hi, Sheri.
And I'll let Chuck take over.
All right, Chuck. He was here for a second and walked out.
Chuck, I just want to point out that the council just increased their levy rate.
Oh.
From fourteen oh six to thirteen eighty-one. Also, which I think is a historic reduction. You've been around as long as I have. Can you remember a time that it's been rolled back that hard?
Remember our previous conversation, you were like, well, you know, a number of years past, we're always pretty starving. Trying to make, budgets made, and, uh, this has been unusual. It's unpleasant.
It's good to be Berkeley.
Fifty-four, I wrote. Yes.
Well, we take, Chuck, we take great pride in not only, uh, saving the taxpayers' money, but also in the thing, the, the, all the stuff, good things that we're getting accomplished.
Yes, sir.
And, and in the long run, it makes us a much better community, so.
And it, and it shows with the growth population. There's a, you know, there's a, a lot of people wanting to live here in Berkeley County, and I think this is a part of it.
All right, Chuck, we're ready for you now.
Again, it's a pleasure coming in front of you to present the financial statements. These are, as I mentioned Alan before, these are pretty easy to present. Everything's fairly positive. First of all, I really want to thank the finance department for their help. This is a seventy-six page document, a lot of detail, a lot of information, and it takes a lot of folks in this organization to be able for us to prepare it. Kind of like the finance department, Timmy, Alan, also the tax office. All those folks came together to help us with this financial statement, especially with this, uh, computer changeover and everything else that's been going on. A little more of a challenge, but, uh, I really wanted to thank those folks for helping us. So I, I guess, you know, just to give you a preview of the top of the financial statements as you see them. Obviously, we added the new logo, which was great. But also, if you go through the financial statements, you know, looking at it here the previous years, across the board, generally better. You know, all the revenue sources look better, both stronger, uh, grants look great. We'll talk about that here in a few minutes. And, you know, on the negative side, I don't see anything really materially negative throughout. So it, it's a, it's a very easy financial statement to talk about. Just a couple, uh, high-level abstracts before we dig in. You know, net assets is up about fifteen million, and we'll go through that a little bit. You know, I'll add fifteen million, obviously, some others restructured, some others committed, some others assigned. We'll talk about that here in a minute. But also, I wanted to point, point out, you know, that fifteen million, eleven point five of it is the American Rescue Plan. And American Rescue Plan grant, and just to go back five years, kind of grants. This year, we have fifteen point nine in federal grant revenue. Last year, we had three point two. Two thousand and eighteen, six hundred and one thousand. Two thousand and eighteen, three hundred and nineteen thousand. Two thousand and seventeen, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Just to show the grant revenue and the, and the organization going after the federal fund, funds, it's just, it's astronomical.
Well, that, that's one of, that's one of the visions this county council had many, many years ago was, we needed a grant department. And the crazy thing about it is, if we, if we're not actively going after federal, state grants, it's going to, the money's going somewhere. We're still going to, our, our, our community's going to pay.
Right.
Right, and not get any dividends.
Yeah, it is major, major community impact.
Right.
Bringing in that kind of money that we didn't have.
So when some of us were started, we had zero people in a grant department, and now we have three.
Exactly. And it, it's, you know, two thousand and seventeen, only had a hundred and fifty-five thousand in federal money.
Right.
Right, yeah, whether you agree with the grant process or not, the grant process is out there. Right, if the grant process is out there, why would you not, why would you not do what you can do to get that much for your community?
Right.
Just doesn't make sense not to.
It belongs back here.
Right.
We're, we're spending it. We're, we're, we're sending it out of here. Why not try to collect it back?
Yeah, so looking at the financial statements, the whole, the grants is basically the star setter of these financials. If we go through the financial statements real quick, uh, go back two pages to major funds.
Go, go, tell us the page number you're on.
Uh, we don't have a page number. After the table of contents, it's the listing of funds.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out there that the American Rescue Plan is a major fund. Reason why it's a major fund is because of the amount of activity and the amount of assets in it. We'll talk about that here in a minute, but there's about eleven point five million dollars in that fund. If we can roll back to page eight. On page eight, at the statement of net position, basically, this financial statement here is looking at as if we were full rule for both of the governmental activities and the business activities. And the only business activity we have is basically Berkeley County Building Commission. Everything else is governmental. And if you see our cash, cash equivalent, it's about thirty-five million.
Chuck, did you say, and, and he, he mentioned the building commission, and, and as you know, that's a separate financial statement. And typically, I don't have that presented to you because it's pretty vanilla, with money in, you know, money out. But I think it's important for, for us to recognize the council and what they've done with the restructuring of those, those bonds. And the net impact it will make over the lifetime of, of, of the bonds.
You're stealing my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Great minds, I guess.
Stealing my thunder.
Forget I said anything.
It's one of these tasks.
Okay.
So, a- as Alan mentioned, the Berkeley County Building Commission, you know, they house all the buildings that we have debt on. And, uh, it's a viable part of the organization, and we'll talk about that a little bit, especially in debt refinancing. Usually, it's, like you said, it's usually not much activity going on, and we write something, but, uh, this year was a lot. So cash and cash, you know, increased twenty percent. Right now, it's thirty-five point eight as of June. And if we move down under land, land, it went up about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And basically, that was the Raleigh Street acquisition, and also properties over in Sportsman's Paradise. Machinery equipment went up about three point five million. Majority of that is... Majority of that is vehicles. We went under lease on a bunch of public safety vehicles, and also acquired some equipment. And when you get down here, where you see the deferred outflows, and if you go back two pages, page 10, at the top, you see deferred inflows. Majority of that is dealing with the pensions. So, you know, your PERS, your DIRGs, your TIA. Lot of that information, we do not have much control of as an organization because we are a member participating in those programs. However, we got to reflect the activity of those programs. With that being said, the numbers are big there, and they change big every year. However, if you net it all out, it has about a $300,000 effect on the county. So, even though those numbers are swinging, the net effect is not that big this year. However, next year, with the inflation and everything else going on, those numbers could cause some issues. However, we'll, you know, explain this to you as we, next year.
Last Friday, we did get notification that our employer contribution next year is actually decreasing 1%.
Yeah, but.
Not what we expected.
Not what we expected, but it remains to be seen how that's going to work out. If you switch to page nine, and if I'm going too fast, please let me know. And under the business activities, about two-thirds down, you'll see bonds payable about 29 million. Basically, that's increased about 3.3 million, and that's net of all the refinancings we did. But we did cash out a little bit to fund a project, which is normal. Over-owned leases payable, just.
Chuck, real quick, I'm sorry. Chuck, 29.465 million, even with all the renovations and all the building remodel, new buildings and stuff like that, that's less than what it was when we got here.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It was 34, I think it was over 34 million then.
And the majority of that 3.3 is dealing with the center over here across the years.
Right, the day report center, which pays for itself in one year.
Uh, for the, yes, sir. Great program. Moving down, the leases payable due with one year and do, and more than one year, it's up 173K. Mainly, that's the additional leasing of the vehicles that we mentioned earlier. Our net pension liability already down, already down to the left, it's 6.2 million. Last year, it was 3.4 million, so there was some increase in that liability. If we flip the page, and you go to page 10, under governmental activities, and you see the unrestricted number at the bottom of 33 million. Last year, it was 15 million. Majority of that increase is dealing with those grants, and a little bit of revenues, positive revenues out of the governmental funds.
So, this year is 33 million, what was it last year?
15.
15, okay. Little bit, right?
15, yeah. If we go to page 11, the format of this financial is a little bit different than your normal business type or governmental type financials. It puts the programs up first, the expenses. So, you can see general government. Actually, if you look at general government activities, you go to the right three lines, you see 15 million dollars. That's where a lot of that money, the grant, came through. Last year, it was only 2.3 million, so it's 15 now. Expenses for general government last year was 19.6, this year's 21.7. Public safety, last year 15.2, last 16.4. Health and sanitation was only 222,000 last year, 69. Couple other general notes, if you go down about middle of the page, you'll see property taxes, almost 24 million, 23.9, last year was 22.4. Other taxes, 4.8 million on here, 3.7. Reimbursements last year was 2.5 million, this year's 3.9, almost 3.8. So, your change in net position on the statement here is 20 million. Last year was 6.9. So, you can see the effect of those grants coming through the financial statements. Alright. If you flip to page 12, just a quick note. At the top, cash cash equivalents, general fund 16 million, last year was 11. And the American Rescue Plan obviously wasn't there last year.
And I think one of the things that we got to make sure everybody understands, Chuck, on the American Rescue money, we can actually look at that as a one-time allocation, right? So, we're very cautious of being able to not spend that money in a manner, number one, that we can't sustain it, right? So.
Recurring costs.
Recurring costs, which would be payroll, personnel, and all that stuff. The other thing, too, is that we try to do as much as possible, and actually, the likes in this, in the chambers, one example, is when we can, able to improve through bowlers and chillers and things like that, that if we spend the money, we're going to recoup the money that we're spending within seven years of savings. So, we're trying to be very creative to make sure that that money gets spent wisely and make sure it's being spent to make it more sustainable.
Correct, and the American Rescue Plan, you're limited to what you can spend at all.
We are.
So, so it is limited or restricted respects. Like you said, it's something we have to think thoroughly through.
Right. It's not just an open checkbook.
I'm just going to skip back a little bit here. If we go back to page 35. Page 35 at the top, and you see the increases in the assets, the capital assets in the primary government. You see the land, 748,155. Again, like I mentioned earlier, that was the Sportsman's Paradise lots that we purchased for grant, but also the Raleigh Street. And we just kept that together as the building and land together and reported as land. We're not using that property at the moment, just saying. And you can see below that, a few lines, 3.39 million, that's an increase there. That's basically the auto and equipment that we talked about earlier, the finance for the lease. If we can go to page 37, please.
So, you said we're not using that property, we are using the property, we're not using the building.
Correct, it's sitting there.
So, do you handle a portion of that for the property, or are you just waiting?
We're just going to wait and see until, what will we end up with?
What purpose will we be covering?
Correct, we don't want to make an adjustment, have to readjust it, so.
I got it.
Page 37, at the top of the page, unbalanced detail. Just wanted to walk through this with you, it just mentions fund and the money is either restricted, committed, assigned. As you can see there with the general fund, you know, financial stabilization, 6 million, OPEB, general fees, then we have the budget carryover. And we also have American Rescue Plan. So, basically, you know, as we mentioned, you have 35 million in net assets, but it's all got its own place to be. If we flip the page to page 38, we get back to Alan's thunder over here.
Sorry.
Just wanted to take you down to the bottom at first, and see a little schedule. And you'll see the first three numbers of the 2020A, 2020B, 2020C. Those bonds used to refinance, the other ones below that, the 2011, 2014A, B and C, and the 2015. So, basically, we issued three bonds to pay off six bonds. And if you go up to the second paragraph down from the top, and the last sentence there, so, we estimated that the savings of the first refinancing was about 350,000 in total. Paragraph underneath that, the last sentence there, mentions about 1.78 million dollars in savings in that refinance.
Plus, we shortened the term.
Plus, shortened the term. So, that's the most exciting thing for the building commission.
And I think the council needs to be recognized for your foresight and your timing. I mean, you hit, you hit the sweet spot with the refinancing of those bonds, particularly the last three that we did, because if you remember, you know, 1.6, 1.66%.
And that didn't happen on accident.
It did not happen on accident.
Just to let everybody know, there was a lot of strategy put into that, you know, got to do it now, got to do it now, no, hold them, hold them, you know. So, I think, according to Cam Seacrest and Greg Isaac, we hit everyone almost perfectly.
And if you remember, some of those bonds that we refinanced, we refinanced before their call date.
Right.
So, even with, even with that little bit of a hit, you still saved.
Well, even, even the Kimco property over at the sheriff's department, I mean, we refinanced that one twice, and both times saved a lot of money.
In short term.
In short term. And it's pretty neat that there's 65, 65,591, 95,000 issued on bonds. We've retired 33,470,000. So, the balance is 32,125. So, we retired more bonds than what we have.
Right. Yes.
And this is just extension of what you do when you're in business. I mean, you know, we're business guys, and this is what we've done in our personal businesses the whole time. I mean, when I refinance, I always make sure that I'm not getting penalties for refinancing. You know, you look at those type of things, and so that you can always keep your market open. That's the, that's the benefit of having guys in business like us sitting up here looking at this stuff all the time, because we do that, and been doing it. I've been doing it for 32 years.
You've been doing it for a couple.
Couple, okay.
You just started. You just started, too?
If we can go to page 51, please. Just want to hit a little bit of the subsequent event there, this is relatively recent. Midway down the page, where it says September 2021. Basically, we're talking about the pilot programs here. We entered into another pilot program with Macy's for initial investment. But we also issued, excuse me, we also entered into two other pilot agreements associated with properties on Porter and Winchester Avenue. So, I just wanted to make sure that those were covered in here.
What do you think about that?
I think it's awesome. Do four pilot programs in one year?
Well, not only are they pilot programs, but they also, you know, it's a partnership of being able to attract the businesses, but also being able to make a one-time donation on them towards the quality life in Berkeley County.
Yes, sir.
Not only that, but take, I mean, like the intercity project here, to be able to take a blighted piece of property that's been sitting for, I mean, as long as I can remember.
Almost 30.
Yeah, I mean, when, you know, to have it.
Land housing before that.
Well, and, yeah, and the top of it was, it hasn't been used for way longer than that. The bottoms were used, but to take a piece of property like that, that's basically an eyesore for the community and take, help turn it back into some productive, it's going to create tax dollars and give some, some housing for younger people. I mean, basically, that's what it's for, to kind of start, start a place, so. Great.
Berkeley County seems to be very attractive to investment. If we go to page 73. This is our scheduled expenditure of federal rewards. Nothing individually I wanted to pull out, it's just if you wanted to review to see where we spent our grant monies last year, this is what we spent. Obviously, it's not the ARPA money that's over in the other account, that has not been spent yet. So, when that gets spent, that will be put on this list in future.
By the way, we got news today that we got another, almost a half a million dollars for higher.
Awesome.
7, yeah, 490, so.
That's awesome. It's just a real quick overview of the financials. You know, there's a lot of detail in here. Anybody has any questions, go reach out to me. Again, I want to thank the commission for having us. It's always a pleasure to work with Berkeley County, you know, and Denny and staff here.
We like to keep up the tradition, and you bring us good news all the time, too.
This one's not, like I've mentioned, this one's not a hard one to go over.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of other things going on in the background, but, you know, the half ones is grants.
Right.
Everything's solid.
Yeah. Yep.
This is, this is a final, final, final draft. We've worked on it, we've had at least one work session to go through it and tweak it. And I think it's safe to say that it's, it's ready for your adoption so that we can, we can get it out there. And really need to have this adopted so that we can roll right into our financial independent audit.
Alright. Anybody have anything to say?
Thanks a lot, appreciate what you do, Chuck.
Yep. Good to see you again.
It's a pleasure. Hopefully, we can do it again next year, just a little earlier.
Yeah, sounds like the software program that we've invested in, it's doing good, good things, and I think the bugs are getting worked out, and thanks to you and your accounting firm, we're doing well.
Charlie's the way to help out.
Alright.
Keep in mind, we're striving to improve it a little bit next year.
That's, that's a hard one to.
That's alright, that's okay. It has goals.
If you adopt this.
Yes, we will.
Alright, need a motion to adopt the audit.
So, move. Second, the financial statement.
Financial statement, I'm sorry. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, any discussion? If not, all, favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Alright, let's just take a quick break, and we'll come right back, we got people waiting for us.
for us.
When we do the estate, uh, for the month, only because, uh, Bruce.
You're on, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Penny.
Especially you know.
Thanks for telling me.
That you'll say you think that you're on.
Now, my gosh.
You holler, even not telling us.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Will Lawrence, a fiduciary supervisor for the state of Robert G. Burke.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning, sir.
We have yet another petition to probate a will in solemn form. As this counsel will recall, West Virginia law requires that a oral will to be probated in this jurisdiction, it must be quote "original, signed, witnessed, and dated" unquote. It has to be that copy, and for any derivation of this standard, one must petition this body for the will to be probated. Ms. Garrett, who is the petitioner in this case, is the will's named executrix and daughter of the deceased. Furthermore, as we are about to hear from the Eastern West Virginia Community Foundation, the will vastly deviates from the alternative of this will being probated and adhered to intestate succession. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Michael Walton to address this body in regards to this estate.
Good morning. Thank you. The Eastern West Virginia Community Foundation has met with Mr. Burke on a number of occasions. He came to our office originally in 2017, and he established a fund with us on October 24, 2017, to create the Burke Family Charitable Fund for Animals. This fund was set up to support nonprofit organizations that provide rescue, adoption, sanctuary, and other services for animals in need in the eastern Panhandle region. He came to us a couple of times, brought in donations of $1,000 each of those two times. I included in the information that we submitted copies of the letters verifying and checks that he had donated. And the intent was always for him to leave a legacy in his estate plan to fund this endowment at the community foundation. We have the fund agreement. You have a copy of that, I believe. And Mr. Burke was also a member of our Legacy Society, which means that he had made a commitment and told us that he had left this in his estate. He did, when he came in the last time, he told me that he had set up this agreement with his attorney, set up a will, and placed a stipulation in the will that we would get a portion of the estate.
I guess, I hate to say this, but I mean, should I sue? He be sworn in? I don't think you need to be, but he does give us some testimony. All right, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
You can trust me.
I know, I know I can trust it. I know that without a problem, but it sounded like he was giving a little bit of testimony there, and I just wanted to make sure.
Just trying to sound official.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's Mike Walton?
He did.
W H A L T O.
Carry on, sir.
That was all.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Walton? All right, not right now.
Thank you.
With that, counsel, I ask that we consider a motion to probate a copy of the will of Robert G. Burke.
Okay, entertain a motion to probate the will.
I did. Counsel, typically in these, in these matters, I obviously notice the hearing and advise them to submit to my office in writing prior to these hearings, as well as they are free and open to appear in person. None of those factions have been.
And you don't have any?
Anybody here today?
No.
No.
You don't have anything to add?
I do not.
All right, entertain a motion. We have a motion on the floor to probate the will of Robert G. Burke. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And next, Will, you have an estate for Donna Markley Hadley.
Yes, counsel, once again, we have another probate, a petition, excuse me, to probate a copy of will of Donna M. Hadley. On December 15, 2021, the petitioner of the issue, of this issue, Levana Helene, the will's executrix and daughter, filed the petition to probate this copy of her mother's will. While this copy of a will does not deviate from the intestate succession, she gives portions of her residual proceeds of all of her assets to her children equally. It would waive bond for Ms. Helene should she choose to qualify as executor of this estate. I've spoken to the petitioner, and I believe she's kind of letting the facts speak for themselves. And again, there are no objections to this petition. So with that, I will ask this counsel consider a motion to accept the copy of the will of Donna M. Hadley to be accepted and probate in this jurisdiction.
Entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right, and Will, the next item you have is the estate accounts for the month of March. I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Vice President Whitaker, only because one of those is a, is a relative of mine, so, all right?
Counsel, for the month of March, we did decrease from 48 to 47, thanks to a last-minute objection filed by a beneficiary's attorney. So with that, I will read the estate of Darlene Louise Allender, the estate of Patrick Barney, the estate of James M. Brady, the estate of Carl Anderson Earleson, the estate of Bernard Bruce Butler, the estate of Mary Chamberlain, the estate of Robert Donald Kramer, the estate of Sharon K. Felton, the estate of Donald Reed Fisher, the estate of Roger Neil Fraley Sr., the estate of Kenneth Harold Gaither, the estate of Monica Lasek, the estate of Ann Huff Hale, the estate of Helen Marie Hawkins Brown, the estate of Genevieve L. Hedges, the estate of John Michael Hutslar, the estate of James Allen Hyatt, the estate of Anthony Leroy Jennings, the estate of Paul Robert Jordan, the estate of Patsy Estelle Kovacs, the estate of Dennis Ray Landis, excuse me, the estate of Robert Elton Lee, the estate of Ruby May Lee, the estate of Samuel Dabble Lewis, the estate of Thomas Edward Litten, the estate of Marcia Anne Long, the estate of Ronald Long, the estate of Patricia McFerrin, the estate of Hester Samantha Manning, the estate of Floyd William McDonald, the estate of Carolyn J. Miller, the estate of Gilbert Benton Miller, the estate of Boyd Vincent Mills, the estate of Louis Allen Nicely, the estate of Gerald Anthony Oates, the estate of Nelson Boyd Lee Robinson, the estate of Glenn D. Selfridge, the estate of Norma Schifrin, the estate of Mildred Constance Sims, the estate of James E. Stevens, the estate of Catherine Louise Stockman, the estate of Hazel L. Tinsman, the estate of Richard Clyde Weishorn, the estate of Douglas M. Widmire, the estate of Kenneth Bruce Wilt Jr., the estate of Betty Sue Young, the estate of Richard David Zinn Sr.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the 47. Do we have a motion to accept?
Yes, I moved it. Accept 47 settlements for people. I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Your next on there again?
Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
You have any state hearings to schedule?
No, counsel, I'm, I'm all good. I'll be away from you for a while.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is Tracy Gilam, grants administrator, grant update. Good morning, ladies.
In February of 2021, we made a slight change in the grants department and hired a grant coordinator who manages the grants by processing award docs, drawdowns, funding, drawdown fundings, completed performance reports, finance reports, researches, statistics, budgets, case studies, and information needed for grants. This change made it possible to increase the production of the department by writing and submitting for grants for the county. In 2021, we extended the Joe Tip Program Grant through September 2023, removed the data analyst position, which was not working in reality, and changed it to a case manager position, which benefits the program. We submitted 32 grants, 13 CARES Act grants for a total of $16,061,618.74 in total grant submissions. We were awarded 21 of the 32 grants, not including the 13 CARES. We applied for a total amount of $3.2 million. The Day Report Center, I'm sorry, we were awarded that. The Day Report Center was awarded $1.4 million. The county was awarded $12.2 million in grants. That includes the American Rescue Plan Act. Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management was awarded $126,250. The Sheriff's Department was awarded $708,000. Port Marshall was awarded $11,925. And the Health Department was awarded $226,717.31 in FEMA grant reimbursement grants. We are currently managing $5.3 million in grant funds, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act funds of 11.3, I'm sorry, 11.5 million. That was currently awarded, and there's still an outstanding balance. We have one outstanding grant that was submitted in 2020 first, or I'm sorry, 2021 for $62,500. And we have 13 CARES Act grants that are outstanding for $8.8 million. We attended 30 hours of American Rescue Plan webinar and training. We attended 29, 29 hours of grant conference calls, 29 hours of grant training, 7.5 hours in COSAP grantee webinars, 24 hours at the COSAP virtual conference, and 156 COVID CARES Act press conferences from the West Virginia Department.
A lot of activity.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
It's almost $8 million of CARES. No?
No.
Okay.
And that's almost.
It's still out there pending, so.
It's not a no.
It's not a no.
Well, if anybody can get it, you will.
So that, that 8 million could potentially take this up to 22 million?
Yes, that 8 million is still pending a yes or a no.
That's half.
That'll change your average, because right now you're almost at 92%.
Well, that's all, it was an old budget, yeah.
That's half our budget now.
Well, we brag about y'all all the time. So thank you for being part of the county, that's for sure. We can't say enough. I mean, the Tim was in here to tell us some good news. We got the email from you earlier this morning, and just, you know, the $497,000 from Hyatt, which, when we met Ruth Phillips the first time, I think it was $50,000.
$50,000.
We'll give you $50,000, see how that goes. So thank you all for everything you do, and thank you for about what you're getting ready to start doing. So.
I look, I look in for 2022 in setting personal grant department goals, we should be able to double the amount of grants that we submitted, not counting CARES, that's kind of an anomaly.
Right, right.
But we should be able to double the 32 grants.
Great use. We could use it. There's a lot of things that we're doing, and a lot of good things. Anybody have any statements or comments?
It's huge for us to be able to do what we're doing to, to keep getting these grants, because we, we, like we talked about earlier, you know, we're 22nd poorest in the state from money coming back from the state. So per capita, and if, if we can offset that by getting grants, then we need to continue to do what we do and, and keep that happening. So thank you to all of you for what you do.
And those, those dollars want to go somewhere in this country, you know, and thank you. I know how hard you all work. I know what you do. I don't understand it, and you don't really need to understand it, but you all do. But thank you for what you, for your efforts.
But we do understand what it does for this community. Absolutely.
Tracy does an amazing job, and since she's come here, she was just kind of taking these grants, leaps and bounds, and she's, she does amazing work. She, I asked her, I asked her all the time when she was joining, I said, "Are you overwhelmed now? I've got this."
Yeah, she looks.
Finally, she said.
She looks all fresh.
We thought we were going to give her a grant writer, and she said, "No, just give me a coordinator," and I got this. And we got April, and her made it together. I mean, great team going out to give it harder. And then finally, she said, "I think it's time to give them a grant writer." And then we have to listen to her, so we're hoping this excels, just like Tracy has, because people like Tracy have just done great job. I couldn't ask for, for better, better staff for grants. They just do amazing.
Yeah, what's listening to them?
Well.
Soaked it all in.
Soaked all in, just learning.
They got her in training and webinars, and they're.
You reckon they have a fire hoojang?
Not quite.
What I mean by Tracy looks refreshed and, and ready to go, it's just, you know, I can ima, only imagine what it would be like, you know, with the federal and state government all the time, on the grants, and trying to keep everything straight, and trying to, and go after more, and it's like, wow.
And still smiling.
As long as I have colored Post-it notes, I'm good. All I need.
I was surprised the walls aren't covered by whiteboards.
She can do the same grant for three consecutive years, same agency. And then finally, the third year, they, they throw in a twist that says, "Now you need this." And she'll come and say, "Well, we need this." I say, "Well, we never needed it before." Just kind of, just when you think you have, she has it all figured out, they throw something in there.
That's right. They want somebody else to apply that has that ability.
I guess, or it's someone trying to justify their job down in DC.
Right.
Don't want to keep giving it to her.
I guess. So, but they stay on top of it.
Yeah, let's go, Tracy. And April. Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't learned your name yet. Elizabeth. Yeah, it's a great team. Thank you. We couldn't do it, Al. Not, not, we can't come as far as we have without, without you all.
You know, it's funny, every time we have a grant administrator, and then he leaves, that person leaves, and we get another grant administrator, it, they kick it up a notch. Well, it has to. It got to be better. Well, yeah, but, you know, it's, it's happened every time.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean we're getting rid of you. No.
That doesn't mean I'm going anywhere either.
You step it up another, another notch, like you're talking about, that's exactly what needs to be happening, that's for sure.
Yeah. You sure do make us look good. Yeah. And that's hard to do. Because I've seen myself in America. All right, well, thank y'all. Any items from the public? If not, we need to go into executive session for legal writers.
And.
Any action?
Economic development.
I suppose we're allowed to go into executive sessions, or whatever it is.
All right, we are in executive session.
Anthony, are you feeling okay?
Alright, we're out of the executive session. Uh, no action will be taken, Mr. Barnhart.
I think I'd like to recess.
We are recessed.